Yeah, it's good. You know, it's good that people are going to national parks.
Yeah.
But, uh...
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is 9:00 AM, June 7th, 2016. I'll call the Hutchinson City Council meeting to order. Please call, roll.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Here.
Solner.
Here.
Inskeep.
Here.
Dave Line.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our prayer will be led by Pastor Kim Berry. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning. Let us pray together. God of all life, we see your glory in the beauty of a sunrise. May your light break through the darkness in our world. Empower wise leaders who can lead the way. Help us find peace in the midst of chaos. Guiding God, may you direct this meeting today so that voices can be heard, opinions expressed, and resolutions embraced. Help us to work together for the good of all, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
Item 4A, a proclamation for Smallville, Kansas, the home of Clark Kent.
Well, if we can invite the cast of characters to the podium here. How are you? What's your name?
Cal.
Well, it's a tradition, the last two or three years, to formally read this proclamation, so it's my honor to do that once again, and welcome. Whereas the fictional character Clark Kent arrived by spaceship and was raised in Smallville, Kansas, and whereas on June 21, 2013, Hutchinson was first proclaimed to be Smallville, Kansas, home of Clark Kent, and Superman Clark Kent was inducted into the Kansas Hall of Fame, and whereas in June 2014 Hutchinson proclaimed to be Smallville, Kansas for two days and hosted the first Smallville, Kansas festival and Smallville Comic Con, which included celebrities from the television series Smallville, and whereas on June 11 and 12, 2016, the third annual Smallville, Kansas festival and Smallville Comic Con will return to Hutchinson. Now therefore, I, John Dave Line, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim that June 11 and 12, 2016, the city of Hutchinson be known as Smallville, Kansas, the home of Clark Kent. Congratulations, and would you all like to say a few comments to give us a review of what's planned for the weekend?
Sure.
Well, we've got a lot going on this weekend. I hope everybody can make it out. Everything from the movie cars, everything else, it'll be a great family weekend. We've got over 100 vendors in there, and so, all kinds of events with laser tag. We've actually got the Smallville Superstars, who are a charity group here in Reno County, with, there's 18 families with kids with terminally ill diseases, and we're gonna have different donation booths set up for them and have them around the show and show them a good time. And basically encourage everybody to come out and check it out and see what it's like. We're in three buildings this year, so there's lots to see and lots to do both days. And thank you all for, again, renaming the town. It means a lot to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you again. It's been fun several years, and I think we'd like to get a photo with you all, if that's possible.
Do it right up here.
Are we all coming down front?
Yeah. I think so. Okay.
I can take it off.
I guess it could've.
Nancy will join you on that side.
No, I'm supposed to touch your wings.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Have a good weekend.
Have a good week.
Item 5, oral communications from the audience.
Well, as is tradition, this is the time we set aside, invite members of the audience to come forward and to present anything that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please state your name and address, so anyone would like, from the audience.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jason Yingling. I'm a lieutenant down at the police department. Every year, we have funds allocated to us from the Department of Justice. It's the Edward Byrne Memorial Grant. As part of the assurances for the grant, I need to come to the governing body and tell you that we're applying for the grant and what we intend to do with the funds. So, this year, they've allocated $26,842 to us, and we split this with the Reno County Sheriff's Department. 69% to us and 31% to them. So our portion this year is $18,521. And what we intend to do with the funds is to upgrade our body worn camera system that we have. We're currently in the process of implementing the body worn cameras. In fact, next week, they'll be put out on the street. The new cameras are a lot better. Technology's evolving pretty quick. These will allow our officers to tag the videos from their cars. It'll eliminate the officers from using two microphones. Right now, they'll have to use one for the in-car video and then one for the body camera, so we can eliminate one of those. And then, a nice feature of the new cameras is that it uses Wi-Fi. So, when the officers are in close proximity to each other, if one turns on their camera, then they all turn on. So, in the Sheriff's Department, they're gonna buy equipment as well. So, if anyone has any comments about it from the public, just get ahold of me at the police department.
Thank you, Jason, for sharing that with us, and certainly an excellent use of those grant funds.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Others from the audience?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Merrill Dye, the Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to remind folks in the public that the Sculpture Walk reception is going to be coming up on June 16th. That's the 3rd Thursday in June at the Art Center from 5:30 to 6:30. If you've been paying attention to what's going on downtown, you've probably seen sculptures coming down and new ones going up, and we're going to unveil those sculptures on, technically speaking anyway, during the reception on June 16th. The program begins at 6 o'clock, and at that time, we will announce the Jurors Award as well as the site sponsors selection as well. Site sponsors get to choose their favorite for this year's exhibit. All of those sculptures are on exhibit for one year, and we will have the People's Choice Award this year. This is the last year for the People's Choice, but folks will have until December 31st to vote for their favorite, and you can go online to do that. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you, but June 16th, that's also the night, 3rd Thursday, for the art walk downtown. So, the reception at the Art Center is a family-friendly event. We'll have some refreshments and some music and a good time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Merrill. Others from the audience?
My name is Jason McDade, and I'm president of the River S, where all were, I like to say 290, 70, if you're not. And I understand that at the end of the meeting, it's on the agenda for the manager to discuss with the council some of the issues involved with the ATV access. I don't necessarily want to touch on those particular issues. What I would like to touch on is, the last time that I was here, I was a witness, as you guys have graciously pointed out, it's a perfect example of community government working with citizens, and I'd like to adhere ourselves to that and continue forth, sorry, and continue forth in that effort for your constituents and my members, and there's a large growing interest in, although I'm allowed five minutes of, I didn't anticipate emotional content.
That's all right. Just relax. You're fine, Jason.
I'm under a large volume of public scrutiny under this endeavor, to the point where they utilize my social media to point out to where I don't make complete stops at the stop signs, and they stop by my house at late hours to knock on my door to ask what's going on with this. And with that said, I would like to continue to try to be that perfect example that I had self-appointed myself to, that I had found that a lot of people had accepted, because I found a large volume and a large group of civic-minded individuals that want to address this concern. And much as the council's aware of, the five-minute content of citizens that can't control simply because they're human, that the emotions and the anecdotal things that they come up here and express over things, so I've tried to eliminate the emotions and especially the anecdotal content of how we operate. I would like to continue to work with the city to solve this matter, whether it be down there or somewhere different or something, which we have all worked together very, very well, and I'd like to continue that effort and wouldn't touch on the specifics of that at a later time. And I appreciate the council's patience and understanding, and at the same time, it's starting to grow, because it's getting nice out, and everybody who kayaks and collects rocks and does everything down there wants to be a part of our organization, and I just don't know where we stand, and for at the end of this meeting, and just to be closing me, go, okay, well, this, it's like, I'm gonna be under a large amount of pressure to answer a large volume of questions that I think needs a little more public awareness. So, with that, I'll wait. So, thank you, Matt. Sorry.
Thank you, Jason.
Jason, just a moment there.
Thank you.
I don't think I've ever seen, in all the years that I've been involved in community service work, an individual such as yourself that has the passion and the dedication that you have toward this endeavor, and we at the city level just cannot thank you enough for your contributions and your commitment to this, and Mr. Dirdoff's gonna share a report here a little bit later, so I hope you'll be here for that.
Oh, I will.
Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else from the audience? Next item, please.
Item 6, consent agenda.
Any questions of council? Entertainer motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Your second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Please call, roll.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Solner.
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7A, consider ordinance dissolving the Hutchinson Community Improvement Commission.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jana McCarron, Director of Planning and Development. And I have a short little PowerPoint presentation for you all this morning. The item before you is consideration of dissolving the Community Improvement Commission. Just a little bit of background on the commission. It was established in 1986, and it had basically three charges: to serve as the city's housing authority, to advise the governing body on restoration and preservation of historic resources, to advise the governing body on ways to make betterments in the community. In 1987, the Landmarks Commission was formed, and that was a recommendation of the CIC. In 1988, the Housing Authority was established, which that had been part of the CIC, and then it was separated from it. And then in 1999, the Housing Commission was established. Again, the CIC had those duties, and based upon the recommendation and the mayor's task force, the Housing Commission became a separate entity. In 2005, the duties of the commission were formally amended in, by ordinance, to just include betterments. And the CIC, since 1986, has been responsible for not only the formation of those other commissions and bodies, but also for a number of initiatives, including the Brush Up Hutch Paint Program, the Spring Cleanup, International Property Maintenance Code, they were some of the champions for getting that adopted, the Community Gardens Program, and they also championed the Complete Streets Policy. What staff is recommending is dissolution of the CIC, because they've done a lot of really great work, but their charge is very narrow right now because of these other commissions that have been formed, and some of the duties that they do, continue to retain, we're proposing would be switched to a different entity. So, for example, up here, Brush Up Hutch Paint Program, what we would propose, that the Housing Commission would have policy direction for that, and staff would approve the individual paint projects. For Spring Cleanup, the Public Works Department managed that this year. They did a great job. They actually have equipment, things that planning doesn't have. International Property Maintenance Code, that's been adopted, and it is enforced by the inspection staff. The Community Gardens Program would be ongoing. Planning staff would still continue to oversee that. And then, the Complete Streets Policy has been incorporated into the subdivision regulations. I know that betterments is one of the, aesthetics is one of the priorities for City Council, so what staff would propose for making sure that we don't lose the ability to address betterments in our community would be that we would have short-term committees or task forces as specific projects would arise. It would be similar to what you're doing for the stormwater fees, or what the city did with the stormwater fees, the sports arena project. So this task force could assemble around a specific topic that the City Council wanted to address and then be disbanded. That would allow for more specialized, intense focus on specific issues, and also would be more respectful of the people who are on that body's time, as well as staff time. And the CIC members who are still a part of the commission, at least until hopefully today, they have agreed, they said they are willing to serve as members of any future board commission or task force. They're quite willing. We have had some difficulty filling positions on the CIC. The benefits that staff sees is that we could be more focused with these task forces. People, the times have changed. People are not necessarily interested in serving every month, coming to a meeting for three years. So, we think this would be more respectful of our time and their time. It would be less cost for staff. We could respond better to issues and get people who have a specific interest in an issue, and then less staff time spent recruiting for vacancies. And so, that's all that I have for you all. We do recommend, as staff, that you would approve repealing these sections of the city code that established the CIC. I can tell you, we did talk to the Housing Commission. They are willing to take over the duties that kind of fall in line with housing anyway, that the CIC was doing, and staff is willing to take over the remaining duties. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jana. Questions from council?
No question, just a comment. I think it makes sense that, given what's occurred over time, and I think the CIC has essentially worked itself out of a role, but I am concerned about the betterment part of it, and I've read the materials and I heard your presentation. I guess I just want to say to us and to the city and the citizens that, when it comes to betterment, it shouldn't just be left to staff or officials to come up with ideas. And so I do have that concern in that area. I think that the CIC certainly, over the years, promoted some tremendous elements: the Housing Commission, Landmarks Commission, the Brush Up Hutch, other things that you'd So I rue the loss of having that group that, who's charged with seeking to have ideas. So, again, I would charge all of us, the community at large as well, that we don't hold off in having ideas. And I think maybe, from the city perspective, we've got a responsibility when we hear an idea. Oftentimes, in a commission setting, you can toss around some, maybe some crazy ideas, but now, some things can catch hold, that we are open to some ideas that maybe sound a little bit out of there, and go with them for a while, and maybe utilize the folks that have been on CIC or have some interest to give us some more input, so as not to miss a potential betterment for our community. So I...
Yeah. I would add, Steve's thoughts. I respect that staff time and volunteer time could probably be better spent than in those particular, that particular setting, but I don't know if it's the people that have been on that commission, and they're just so passionate and innovative, and they've come up with amazing things that have changed our community in really great ways. So, I don't know if we have some sort of mechanism for taking those suggestions that is, you know, well-advertized, or if it is just listening to people, but I would hate to lose that as well. I mean, I think of the Community Gardens, would, if somebody has an idea like that, who do they go to now? I mean, they would just go to staff, or they would go to us?
They could still come to the planning department. They could come to City Council. Some of the members that are on CIC were part of the public art program.
Okay.
I think probably there's some members of CIC, not everyone on CIC is interested, they don't have all the same focus.
Yeah.
But I think some of them are interested in wave fighting signs, so you'll probably see them either coming through me to you all, or directly to you all, to talk to you about that topic. I don't really see that this would make them, us little, any less accessible.
Okay.
It's just the formality of having this monthly meeting. Oftentimes, we're just reporting what we did, and I don't even know if it's really generating enough ideas. It's not really an idea generator. So, we're hoping that by dissolving it and opening up other avenues...
Yeah.
...that it'll work better.
Well, and hopefully, the public component of the upcoming comprehensive plan will provide an avenue for people to give those type of suggestions.
Jana, talk a little bit about what you're gonna do with the Bravo Awards, would you?
Yeah, the Bravo Awards, you probably noticed, we didn't do them this year. The Bravo Awards have been around for 16 years, and the last few times that we did them, it boiled down to staff coming up with the recommendations. And I think part of that is because, and we were starting to get renominations, properties that had already been nominated before. So what we intend to do, or hope to do with the Bravos, is kind of refocus those in our neighborhoods.
Okay.
And there is a neighborhood competition right now for, in the West Avenue A neighborhood, for improving their front yard. And so, we think that maybe if we change those around to be more neighborhood-focused, that we'll get, we'll see better results.
Okay.
So, they're not gonna go away. We're just, we're proposing that we kind of retool that to speak more at the neighborhood level.
Okay.
Well, I certainly concur with council's comments about the need for citizen input, but to me, this is a great example of streamlining local government, in terms of you internally looking, along with those commissions and those citizen groups of making ourselves more efficient, and applaud you for that approach, and I believe it's time to reevaluate those things, and I think it's a good decision.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council, or anyone from the audience? All right, is there a motion? On 7A, consider ordinance dissolving the Hutchinson Community Improvement Commission.
I move we accept and approve the staff recommendation to, and the ordinance repealing the sections listed that dissolves the Hutchinson Community Improvement Commission and authorize the murder to sign.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Please call, roll.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Solner.
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Item 7B, consider resolution dissolving the ADA Advisory Board.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Merrill Dye, the Assistant City Manager. For the purposes of this particular agenda item, I'm also the city's ADA Coordinator. The Americans with Disabilities Act was enacted in 1990. Under Title II of the Act, cities were required to perform a self-evaluation and put together a transition plan to come under the Act, and they had three years to do that. Title II also requires cities to have a designated person serve the role as ADA Coordinator, and to also publish a grievance procedure and a notice of ADA. The city has always met the requirements under Title II for an ADA Coordinator, the public notice requirement, as well as the grievance procedure, and since 1990, several people have served in those, in that particular role as ADA Coordinator. Connie Wright, Carlota Pons, Lila Fritschin, all of whom were under my supervision, and then I have also served in that role, at least twice. The 1992 version of the grievance procedure provided for two citizens to serve with the city manager to hear grievances that were appealed from the ADA Coordinator. However, no grievances were appealed to the ad hoc group. By 1995, the role of the grievance committee was changed to serve in an advisory capacity to the city council, and members were added. In 1999, a resolution created the ADA Advisory Board to implement the ADA and expanded, expanded the number of people on that board. In 2009, another resolution changed the number of people serving on the board again, and continued to charge the board with the responsibility of implementation of the ADA. In 1999, the Disability Rights Section of the U.S. Department of Justice began reviews of local and state governments after settling a complaint with the city of Toledo, Ohio. Most of the compliance reviews were undertaken on the department's own initiative under the authority of Title II, and these reviews were known as Project Civic Access. The compliance review sites were chosen based on the department's desire to visit every state, the population of the site, and in some cases, the proximity to a university or a tourist attraction. The majority of the compliance reviews occurred in small cities and towns because they represent the most common form of local government, and that was the case for the city of Hutchinson. No complaint had been filed against the city of Hutchinson with the Department of Justice. The review that was done was for other reasons. The city's current notice of ADA and grievance procedure followed the language that was provided by DRS during the 2005 review of the city's ADA compliance. The grievance procedure provides that grievances appealed from the ADA Coordinator go directly to the city manager. To my knowledge, no formal grievance has ever been filed under the city's grievance procedures, regardless of the version that was being followed. Whenever a Title II accessibility issue comes to the ADA Coordinator's attention involving city services, programs, or activities, other staff members work with the coordinator to resolve the issue as soon as practicable, and every effort is made to provide reasonable accommodation when requested. accommodation when requested. Further, with the city manager's support over the years, the city's ADA coordinators have voluntarily conducted at least three additional self-evaluations. They have coordinated several in-house and public training sessions on ADA, and coordinated a public video presentation entitled Invisible Voices. That was mandatory training for the city management, which we also partnered with the Hutchinson Community College and the Prairie Independent Living Resource Center. In 2013, the city received an award from PILLAR in recognition of our accessibility initiatives and disability awareness, and we also, I didn't put it into my cover memo, but in the early stages of coming under ADA, the city also was awarded a grant from the Department of Justice for our ADA efforts. Neither Title II nor the city settlement agreement with the Department of Justice require the city to have an ADA Grievance Board or an ADA Advisory Board. This board has been in place, as I've mentioned, for basically all these years, and I struggle to come up with agenda items from time to time. When we don't have issues to cover under Title II, we don't meet, and sometimes we have planned meetings only to find that we don't have a quorum. And when we do meet, sometimes the discussion turns to issues that are outside of Title II and focus on other accessibility issues that the city has no responsibility.
What would be an example of those that fall outside of Title II?
Perhaps a issue that comes under Title III, which covers public accommodations. For example, public accommodations would be skating rinks, retail...
Oh, I see. Okay.
Grocery, that sort of thing. Issues may have come up involving the width of aisles at a, at a store, at a retail outlet, or parking issues in a private parking lot.
So out of curiosity, if someone has a complaint about that, who do they go to? They don't go to the city?
They go to the U.S. Department of Justice.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So I am recommending dissolving the ADA Advisory Board, and you have in your packet a resolution to repeal the resolution that creates the board. Moving forward, I would suggest an in-house team periodically meet to look over ADA compliance review, we do that basically anyway. The folks that have served on the ADA Board in kind of an ex officio fashion have included the city engineer, the city's building official, our assistant Parks and Facilities Director. So I would suggest including all of those individuals, along with the Director of Parks and Facilities, Justin Combs. And then also, I have visited with Chris Owens of PILLAR, and she has assured me that PILLAR stands ready to continue to assist the city. Whenever we have projects coming up, blueprints to look at, plans to consider, programs, activities, PILLAR stands ready to assist us. Their staff has always worked with us in the past, we've partnered many times over the years. They also have Andy, whose last name escapes me right now, I apologize, but who is certified in his role as an ADA Coordinator professional. So I think that we basically would continue forward, seeking citizen input, not just from PILLAR, but also from other people in the community. Doug Rice has served on the ADA Board off and on throughout its existence, and has also been, you know, a key voice in promoting ADA compliance in our community. I've also spoken with the other members of the ADA Board, Sky Templeton, I'm sorry, Joe Allen, who, both of whom work for Health Equip. Toyla Frondorf, who is a member of the ADA Board and also represents special, works with special populations for Hutchinson Recreation Commission. So we have plenty of folks in the community who stand ready to assist the in-house team as we move forward. So I really don't think much of anything will change in terms of gathering citizen input and assuring ADA compliance for the city.
Would it make sense to keep, keep the board, but in the ad hoc, I know that's not how the ordinance is written now, but in a more ad hoc setup, so that you would still at least have members, citizens, having input during those in-house, instead of just, does that make sense? Because I recognize that the city, you've done a phenomenal job, and others in that ADA Coordinator role. And so I, it's, I just think that if, if you're dealing with a protected class, they need to have, we need to make sure that they have a say in, in those meetings.
Essentially, that's how we have functioned, is ad hoc, because we don't always have a quorum, or we don't always have topics to talk about in terms of projects or programs or services, so.
So would we effectively just be moving, who would people go to? Would they go to PILLAR then, if they had an ADA request?
If they have an ADA issue, they come to the ADA Coordinator, they can utilize the grievance procedure, we post the notice and the grievance procedure on our website, we make, we make that information public.
Okay.
And again, we have never had a formal grievance of ADA. That's not to say that we've not had complaints.
Yeah.
But the complaints have come to my attention, and we resolve them.
But that's because you're so committed, Merrill, to this topic, and, you know, you're not always gonna be here in 10 years or 20 years, or when you're off in Hawaii, retired. But, but I guess that's what I'm thinking about. You have a particular passion and commitment to this issue that I don't think is reflective of everyone. Would you agree?
I think that anybody who serves that role as ADA Coordinator, you know, as long as we're signing their paycheck, they're gonna have a passion in it. But I, I would do it even if I didn't get a paycheck, but yes, I do have a passion for it.
Okay.
You know, as long as you're still functioning, or someone is functioning in that role, I can see why eliminating the board, if they have not had issues to deal with, makes sense. Goes back kind of to John's comment about streamlining local government, and, you know, as long as there's always gonna be someone functioning in that position, and a grievance procedure in place, and I think we're, I think we're okay.
As, as I mentioned, Title II requires...
Yeah, so, yeah.
...that the city have a designated person to serve that role. It's a portable role. Merrill Dye doesn't always have to do it. I mean, he could be Paul Brown or...
And, and I think we're, you know, I realize that we're not...
You just got a promotion, Paul.
You know, everyone is not as aware as they should be, but the awareness level within the community has certainly improved considerably from the time that this was first put into place. So I feel comfortable that we're gonna be okay.
Merrill, I've, I've looked from time to time on the website as far as meetings that are upcoming in the various commissions, and the only one I've seen listed for the ADA Advisory Board was back in June of, of last year. Is that the last formal meeting, or last meeting where there wasn't even, even if there wasn't a quorum?
Actually, I think that we have met since June of last year.
Have you?
Because we sat with our architect, Gary Haller, of Schaefer Johnson Cox and Frye, to review the sports arena and parking lot. And I can't tell you what month that was, but it's been this year, so.
But isn't, it is indicative of, of the limited activity that, that's been there for the ADA Advisory Board? What, what are the ongoing plans for the city in terms of public access?
We're gonna meet the law.
Well, I mean, understood.
Now, I'm sorry, what do you mean by public access?
Right, as far as Title II is concerned.
Public input or public access?
Compliance.
Compliance, thank you.
I, I don't want, I'm not seeking to key in on particular words that maybe, but yeah, just compliance.
My suggestion is that the in-house team continue to meet, which we essentially do anyway, through our Development Review Committee or other projects that come up. Again, the ADA Coordinator is a portable role, but if it's not the city manager, I suggest that somebody very, very close to the city manager, so that that person is kind of plugged into all the different things that are going on in our community, because it's not just construction projects, it's programs, services, and activities. That could be, you know, the striping of a municipal parking lot, it could be how we deliver services in the police department, or at the front desk paying your utility bill. So it's, it's a very broad scope, and I'm not sure if I answered your, your question, but somebody who is narrowly looking at construction projects is not necessarily gonna be paying attention to what's going on and how services are delivered in the police department, or municipal court, or, you know, any of those services that sometimes we don't think about. We think of the, the physical facilities, you know, whether doorway is wide enough, and, you know, the, the reach of paper towels in the bathroom, that sort of thing, but it's more than that.
Other questions from Council? Any comments from the audience?
I want to, I, I wanna thank Chris Owens and Doug Rice particularly. I, I also wanna thank the other members who have served on the ADA Advisory Board all of these years. It's, it's really been a great partnership, and I'm hopeful that it will continue to be that. I've had this assurance from, from Doug and Chris, but they've given countless hours and been right by my side. So, thank you, Chris and Doug.
All right, any other discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the resolution, repealing Resolution 2009 R-28, dissolving the Americans with Disabilities Act Advisory Board and authorize the meritor sign.
There a second?
Second.
Motion on the second? Please call roll.
Iris Day Carvalho.
Yes.
Solner.
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7C, consider ordinance rezoning property to the east of 1024 North Hendricks.
Good morning, I'm Casey Jones, Senior Planner, and we have a request to rezone a property located on the west side of our community. It's near 11th and Hendricks, and it's a property that's owned by the city. I have a map of it here on the screen for you. There's a fire station at 1024 North Hendricks, and the city is planning on tearing that down and building a brand-new fire station there, and it's gonna be a little bit bigger than the existing fire station. So to accommodate the, the new building, the city has acquired a vacant lot just to the east of the existing fire station, and that's the property outlined in red. And as you can see, we have two different zoning districts right there. I mean, the fire station is currently zoned PI, which is public and institutional, and then everything around it, including the new property we acquired, is zoned R4, which is a residential district. And the purpose of this request is just simply to bring the whole property into a single zoning classification, PI, and a fire station is a permitted use in that district. Just have a few photographs to show you of what's out there today. This is a look at the current fire station from several different angles, and then you can see in the background of the picture here, the vacant lot with all of the trees on it is the one we're talking about rezoning. And there's a house adjacent to that, the yellow house in the background. Another view, different angle. And then here's just an up-close shot of what that vacant lot looks like today. And I have a site plan that'll show you. A significant portion of this grass area will actually be paved, it'll become a, a drive, a drive, driveway, maneuvering area for the fire trucks. A view of the site plan here, showing you the new driveway approach that will go on to the north, onto 11th Avenue. And then on the east side of the property there, where this parking lot will abut that residence, as you can see on the next slide, we have a landscaping plan, and the city is proposing to have some new trees put in along that east side to kind of provide a little bit of a buffer there, adjacent to that house, and the city's trying to save as many of the existing mature trees as we can, and that's what you see there at the northeast corner of the lot in this landscape plan. I have just a couple of elevation renderings that show what the fire station might look like, from a couple different sides. This is the north and west elevations, and then the south and east elevations. I believe that's all we had on our PowerPoint. It was really a pretty easy public hearing. On May the 3rd, the Planning Commission is recommending approval, and they voted nine to zero to approve the rezoning request, and we didn't have any comments from the public. So, any questions of me? I know our fire chief is here, able to answer any questions you might have about the project itself.
Chief, is that project, have we let that contract yet?
Kim Forbes, Fire Chief. No, we haven't.
Yeah.
And the, the plan would be, through July, we'll finalize the building plans, go out to bid on it, and so hopefully, the third week, the fourth week of August, not only would we be able to, uh, name who the, the party would be for the construction process, but also for the demolition, and then within, say, the first 10 days of September, according to, you know, schedule or so, that we would be able to start that project then. I think within probably the first 10 days of August, we'll be able to move into the first station that we're on E Street, that we'll be able to move in. It was slowed down a little bit by the weather, but we're still, I just talked with the architect yesterday, we're still on our schedule as far as to have the plans presented to us middle part of July. Take about three weeks to, to go out to bid for contractors, give us information, so I think toward the end of August, we can award that project and move forward.
Very good. Okay. That, well, that station will, will be just like the, the station on E?
Should be duplicate, yes, yes. And, and the reason why we had to acquire the land, when that station was built back in 1975, it could be closer to Hendrick Street, and now with the new regulations, we had to move it further back from the street, both from 11th Street and from Hendricks, and then also the building's larger itself, so then that made it necessary to acquire that land and have, just have more maneuver room. So then that made it necessary to acquire that land and, and have, just have more maneuver room.
Are there any questions?
Well, just a question for Casey. Is a fence required there on the east, um, uh, boundary along with the, the landscape screening?
It is, yes, and, and that, that is part of the plan. I think there will be a five-foot-high or six-foot-high fence going in there along with the trees.
And Casey, um, this is, this is a really exciting project and I'm all for it. But did have one question, I know that the 1427, you didn't receive comment back, but I think they're in for a rude awakening if they, if they recycled that, that letter from the city. So is anything done to reach out to them in, in particular? No, no additional notice?
Well, I mean, we sent them a letter. We advised them of the, you know, time, place, date of our hearing. But that was, that was the only outreach directly from our department.
And which, which, which address you talking about?
That Wilson property.
That was the one on the other side.
The property immediately east or, or different direction?
Yeah, the 1427.
And that's who we bought the land from?
We bought the land from them.
Oh, okay, so the-
Yeah, just a sliver there, didn't we?
Yeah, we, we made contact with, with, uh, Mrs. Wilson. She was aware of, obviously, uh, the families lived there for years. So they're used to the fire station, the noise. Uh, but we also, uh, one of the things that we talked about was the, the building itself moves closer to the house, but there's still gonna be a considerable barrier between the building and the parking lot. We'll leave the parking lot, I think it's about 30 foot from what her property line is. So there won't be a truck idling, you know, right next to the building or some, or her house. But they're used to the, the noise of the fire truck, the, the siren and stuff. And surprisingly, the people in the neighborhood, they've become accustomed to that. But, you know, you're right, if, if you've never been around that, then it's kind of a rude awakening in the middle of the night or so. But, uh, she's glad that the, the station's there. And, uh, you know, we had that conversation to make sure that nothing really, and the, the number of people that's stationed there, uh, there'll be more equipment there, but the number of people and things like that won't change. So the, the character of the neighborhood won't be a drastic, uh, change or so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of, uh, the chief or of Casey? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to accept and approve, um, the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the request to rezone the, the lot to, um, PI at 1024 North Hendricks.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Hyra St. Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8A, consider water right offset agreement with Cargill.
Morning, Council and Mayor. This is, I'm Don Coche, the Superintendent of Water Treatment Systems. The, uh, item for consideration in front of you today is a water right offset agreement between the City of Hutchinson and Cargill Incorporated. Joining, um, us today are two representatives from Cargill, Don Jenks and Chris Friesen, and also their consultant, Representative of Burns and McDonnell, Daniel Clement. Just to provide you a, hopefully a brief history on, on this issue. About six years ago, Cargill Grain Elevator at the, at 1427 East Second Avenue was experiencing basement flooding that put critical, uh, infrastructure and equipment at risk from water damage. The source of the flooding was from groundwater that was seeping into the basement structure from the underlying aquifer. The remedy to the problem at that time, Cargill obtained a term water permit from the State's Division of Water Resources, allowing them essentially to pump a water well located nearby the, the structure that would de-water the basement of the grain elevator by lowering the water table of the aquifer. The water permit was approved by the State of Kansas for a five-year term, allowing the owner to pump up to 158 million gallons per year at a maximum rate of 300 gallons per minute. As a condition of that permit, Cargill was required to offset the quantity of water for that, for their permit with an equal quantity of water from an existing water right. And the reason for that was, at the time and currently, there was no water available for appropriations as the area was fully developed under the, uh, the Safe Yield Regulation for the area. And because of that, they had to seek an existing right to, to, to make that work. Cargill then approached the city with an offset request. And on December 20th, 2011, the City Council at that time approved an agreement with Cargill to offset the needed amount of water from the city's vested right, Reno County 19. That vested right is a, a water right that was acquired from, uh, the Vidge Industries Company as part of the groundwater contamination cleanup efforts over in the Fourth and Cary area. And that water right is currently held in reserve in a water rights conservation program with the State of Kansas for, for future use. As part of the 2011 agreement, it was required that Cargill pursue and implement, as deemed feasible by Cargill, an alternative solution to preventing flooding and eliminate the need for de-watering. And in just a moment, representatives of Cargill will provide an update to that provision and address any questions you may have. Now, that brings us to today. Earlier this year, Cargill's original term permit was terminated. Essentially, it expired in, in February. And, uh, the, uh, they have now filed a new term application to replace it that is also subject to the same conditions as the original term permit. The proposed agreement in front of you today applies to the new term permit and will replace the former agreement or the 2011 agreement with the city. The conditions at the elevator site today are basically the same. Not much has changed out there. And the new agreement, uh, also in front of you is basically the, the same as the, the prior agreement. With the exception that it can be renewed for future term permits if deemed justifiable at that time. That, so it won't have to come back to the council every, every five years. So, when, if, when the next term permit comes up for renewal or replacements. With that, staff recommends that the water right offset of 485 acre feet per year or 158 million gallons per year, as requested by Cargill, be granted. And at this time, I'd like to have the representative of, of Cargill come up here and address the feasibility alternative solution that was part of the original agreement as far as what other efforts have been made to look at other options versus, versus de-watering. Daniel Clement with Burns and McDonnell.
Good morning, Council. Thank you for having us here this morning. My name's Daniel Clement. I'm a hydrogeologist with Burns and McDonnell out of Wichita, Kansas. Again, thanks for having me this morning. I think Don summed it up well. What we're looking at is, is kind of a renewal of, of what we did back in 2011, which is renewable, a renewal of a term permit which is issued by the state that allows us to de-water. It's essentially a kind of a sump pump on steroids for this facility. It's the grain elevator that's between First and Second Street and I think east of, what is that, Lorraine there? So basically, we have a basement there in that facility that has conveyor equipment that's just, just so high off the floor. And what happens is just when the water table gets up so high, the basement does begin to fill with water. It's porous concrete between the foundation, et cetera, et cetera. We all have basements that we're familiar with. And so that's, that's what we're looking at today is the ability to have an offset. The state will not issue a permit without some type of offset. In this case, it was the city. And city staff has been great with, to work with, both Don and, and Brian on, on the issue. So what we have before us is, is looking at sort of, um, you know, we don't really want to pump the well if we don't have to. It's kind of a unique situation where, when water levels are really, really high, that's, that's typically a good thing from a water resources standpoint, but, but not in this case. Again, we, we've looked at some of the opportunities for sealing the basement. With the size of the facility, there's, there's just really no other way to do it other than largely de-watering or another capture environment that's, that's ultimately going to be moving water away from the facility. Again, the conditions that, that trigger us to pump that water are uniquely high groundwater levels when the resource is too plenty, which is kind of ironic, if everybody remembers the drought. But, um, that's, that's kind of the conditions that we anticipate. And, and outside of de-watering or, uh, you know, a capture, um, system inside the facility, there's really not a whole lot of feasibility that, that we feel like there's out there besides this de-watering permit. So with, with that, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions council might have.
Well, I'm sure we all totally grasp exactly.
I was lost at hydrogeology.
I know, and it's, uh, it is a very complex issue. And the only I can say is, is that, uh, Cargill Company corporate-wide, they've been a great partner with the, the City of Hutchinson on multiple, um, water-related issues and, and other related issues. So, um, we understand what you're, you're asking for, right.
Well, I'll disagree. I don't, I, I, I might understand. Where does the water go that you pump?
Currently, we're discharging to the, um, I guess it'd be the storm sewer.
Storm sewer. No depletion or no negatory impact on our well system?
No. Where this particular well is located at, the closest wells the, the city would have would be groundwater remediation wells. And under the original review back in 2011, that was a concern that city staff looked at. Certainly didn't want any high-capacity wells causing problems with the containment of the groundwater contamination that we're, we're trying to clean up down there. Given the size of this well and the location of it, there wasn't any concern of it being, impacting it negatively at that time. And I certainly don't see any changes at this, this time either.
I'm, I'm curious, why do you choose this method rather than a, I think you used the word "capture", which I would assume means some sort of a, a sump pump kind of thing where you capture the water that was trying to come in rather than lowering the entire water table?
Yeah, there's, and I'm not a structural, but beyond, beyond just capturing the water inside it, a trench system can be overcome. That's the other risk. It's just the rate of infiltration exceeds that of gravity and there's not much fall within, you know, a facility that's flat. And so that's the other risk. And additional construction costs in an operating facility, those are the, those are the pieces of that equation.
So essentially, looking at this for the foreseeable future, for as long as that structure's there and as long as the, the, the water table, you know, the rain is such that the water table is high enough to, to infiltrate?
Right. And, and, and Cargill really hasn't used that much water over the past four years because the water table had declined during the drought period. And it's just now probably recovering with the, uh, the precipitation we've had over the last couple of years. Yes, um, this would be a long-term, expected to be a long-term, uh, item to control this. We did leave the provision in the proposed agreement for, uh, uh, looking at any other alternatives because we don't know what the future holds that may come available, that, just technology that might allow a different way of, of dealing with this. Ironically, the, a little history on, on this, um, this Cargill, that elevator's been there for a long time. What also was there for a long time was the old former Cary Salt facility located nearby. Cary Salt had a number of high-capacity wells that were constantly pumping in the operation of the facility. And when Cary Salt went out of business and those wells, um, were, uh, dis-commissioned and plugged out, um, essentially the water table on regional drawdown of the aquifer of the area rebounded back up. And in turn, Cargill is seeing the effects of that. Kind of the ironic thing here is the water right that the city is looking for offsetting for this are the old water rights for the Cary Salt facility. So a little bit of history there.
You answered my next question. I was wondering, why, why wasn't this a problem before six or so years ago? Or, okay. Help educate me. I, I know that the mayor is, is fully aware of all this and, and understands it well. At least that's what he said a moment ago. This offset, I, so we have, we own an order, we, we own water rights, the city, correct? And we can allow those water rights to be used by another party. And that's what's, that's what this is about.
We can voluntarily allow that to be done, but it's up to the, both the State of Kansas and the Groundwater Management District to actually approve that and grant the ability to do that. Really, ultimately, the Division of Water Resources of the State of Kansas.
We, we can offer it and then the state is the, the approving authority. Okay. I'm not gonna try to go any further. I'm already in my head.
If you ever want a hydrology 101 class, you can stop by.
All right, other questions, uh, of Daniel or Don?
I, I guess I would just comment and certainly echo the, uh, the mayor's comment about Cargill and, and a good corporate, uh, uh, partner in, in, here in Hutchinson. But it sure, I sure hate to think of water as being pumped to, to throw it down the drain. This part of the state happens to be a pretty water-rich part of the state. Granted, the drought might lower the level. I, I come from northwestern Kansas and, um, um, that would be pretty sinful, even, even when the drought's not in, in effect. And, um, I, I'd sure encourage whatever can be done to not simply be pumping water to throw it down the drain. Whatever might be out there that could be done to, to solve your problem. Just, just from a, uh, not conservation, so, well, yeah, just being cognizant, you know, in a more than just Reno County or Hutchinson, uh, uh, kind of thing of, of, of good, good use of, of water.
It cycles back to us, doesn't it?
It all recycles. It all recycles.
It, it is a hydrologic cycle, yes. City staff would agree that it's not the most efficient method of addressing this issue. But right now, it's the most feasible method. And, and hopefully, as, as time goes on here, it may be a possibility of there's some other options there. One of the options that was looked at back on the original agreement was could this water be taken further away and injected?
Re-injected?
Into a glass five well into the aquifer. The concern there was there are contaminants in that groundwater that could affect the aquifer by doing so.
So you're better off? Don't think you're gonna put Orangeburg tubing under a grain elevator to get the water off, so.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Would you entertain a motion?
I will move to approve the water right offset agreement between the City of Hutchinson, Kansas and Cargill Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Please call roll.
Hyra St. Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8B, consider contract with Athco LLC for playground equipment in George Pile Park and Garden Grove Park.
Good morning, I'm Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. When I first started here a couple of years ago, two and a half years ago, I, I noticed that playgrounds really weren't up to, up to snuff. It had been, been neglected, hadn't been replaced in, in quite a while. So I developed a priority list of playgrounds. The first playground on that list was, um, Cary Park Area 2, which was the playground we did last year with the Hutch Card funds. The second playground on that list was Garden Grove Park, which we budgeted in this year's budget $55,000 for replacement. Also, in the last eight or nine months, we've, we've had kind of a grassroots effort to get a playground downtown. Specifically, the Avenue A folks, the Ragosta family, have been very active in helping to find ways to get a playground downtown. And so we identified George Pile Park, the east half of George Pile Park, and, um, had a little bit of funding left over from the west part of, of George Pile Park through that renovation process, as well as a very generous gift from Civitan, um, Civic Club to help pay for play, playground equipment. And, and excited about George Pile because of the way it came up, because it's really a grassroots effort. It wasn't something as park staff, we, we identified, so. So anyways, over the last several months, been working on funding for that park. Finally, I got to a point where I was comfortable that we had enough money to purchase playground equipment. So I sent out an RFP for playground equipment several weeks ago. I formed a three-person selection committee. Committee was Craig Morrison, the Assistant Director of Parks, Steve Allen, who's our new Superintendent of Park Operations, and I also invited Amy Dinker from the Planning Department. Amy's been very instrumental with the group from Avenue A and the neighborhood efforts there. So I thought she would bring a, a nice kind of neighborhood perspective to that, so. So, so I developed the, the three-person selection committee. Kind of the parameters I put around the, the playground equipment for both sites, the RFP was for both sites. Was on one playground equipment that focused on, on upper body strength, balance, provided multiple access points and internal routes. So not just a traditional playground structure that you kind of come up ladder, walk across the bridge and down a slide and do it over and over again. And also, we asked the committee to look at things, look at responses based on play value. Play value is kind of a hard term to define, but it's kind of what is the value to the child? How does a play structure look from a seven-year-old's perspective? It's kind of the easiest way to put it, as well as durability and then originality of the design. We had five companies respond, and of the five, based on the criteria that I set forth, the selection committee did choose Athco LLC out of Olathe. We've worked with Athco a lot here lately. They were the company that did the Orchard Park Playground. They also did Kerry Park Playground, and we're working with them at Rice Park on a splash pad as well. So we've got a great relationship with them. They have great products, great customer service. Both of these playgrounds are going to be community-built, just like we did at Kerry Park. For the George Pile Playground, we've asked the Avenue A folks, kind of a loose group of folks to help get volunteers, and I know they will produce probably more volunteers than we need. At Garden Grove Park, I've engaged the young professional group, and they're very, very interested in helping, as well as I know a couple neighbors in that area that are excited as well. So for both, we'll have a combination of hired staff from Athco, professional installers. We'll have some of the park staff there as well as volunteers, very similar to what we did at Kerry Park. I do have a few photos here. This is for George Pile Park, so directly across the street. This is a design that ultimately the selection committee chose. A very interesting design. I've never seen anything like this. It's a combination of ropes, slides, conveyor belt features. There are over 20 individual elements packed into this tiny playground, and it is relatively small. Here's just another view of it. I did call out colors. I generally don't call out colors on playgrounds equipment. I did on this one being downtown. I didn't want something really bright and overwhelming, so I called out kind of a brick red, a green, and a tan to kind of blend in with the setting of downtown, with the brick and the greenery, so. And that actually is a photo taken from the site, so you'll see that the playground will kind of blend into landscape. This is an installation, the exact same playground. There are 23 kids in that photo right there for such a small playground, so that's kind of the beauty of this design. I believe everyone has seen this drawing before, but if not, I'll point it out here. So this is the developed portion of George Pile Park now. This is the gazebo. This is Cow Creek. And so everything that's in green will be kind of this developed area with this phase. So the gray are sidewalks, new sidewalks that will be going in hopefully this week or possibly next week. And then the center of the circles where the play structure itself will go. This area here is for, down the road, if we want to add a swing set or something, we've already identified where additional play structures can go, so.
Cool.
This is just an overhead view of the playground, so this is a 50-foot inside diameter circle that I showed in the previous slide, so this shows this play structure really fills that entire area. And again, there are 21 elements in basically a 50-foot circle, so. Pretty impressive playground. I'm excited about that. I think the kids will really enjoy it. It's something that they've never seen in this area. We don't have those sorts of climbing features, so. Garden Grove Park. Here's a 3D rendering of it. I did not call out color selections. I've not chosen colors yet, so this is just what the manufacturers recommended, I guess. There's a close-up of a couple of the two elements, the climbing and the ladder bridge. Two more of the features. This design really is impressive when you look at it from a connectivity standpoint. So this overhead shot shows it very well. This is a spinning element that kids can get on and spin, but you really can enter the structure at this point here, come across the bridge, across these two wobble boards, I think is what they're called, through the climbing structure, onto the monkey bars, across the pods, and then onto this deck and ladder system, and then down a slide or down one of these other climbing elements. So this entire playground really is connected, and that's really appealing to larger kids, or older kids, I should say, really like that, you know, how can I get through the playground? How fast can I go through it? What are the different routes I can take in it, so.
Get a quality test at mayor.
I'll let everyone know when we do the community build. If you guys want to come out and be the first to play on.
Test it out.
Public safety.
So it is a great playground. I'm really excited about this one. We don't have very many of these large rope climbing structures. This is going to be a relatively tall climbing structure. The structure is going to be across the street. That rope system is short. It's really designed to balance on, and this one's designed to climb up. So they both have rope elements, but they're really quite a bit different, so.
Justin, is that a mulch material you use on the base?
Yeah, we do.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, there's.
Is it blow or?
There's not a perfect safety material. The poured-in-place material like we have at Orchard Park, it's very expensive. It's basically the same cost as the playground. It's kind of a good rule of thumb, so for these, we would have to double the price for them. They're not maintenance-free. Eventually, the seams will start to separate. Out there, we've got different colors. Those colors will start to separate. Kids can vandalize it, or adults can vandalize it. It's very hard to repair and costly to repair. The wood fibers or the mulch, they're much more inexpensive to install. They're easier to maintain. They require more maintenance, but it's easier to do. It's just raking the mulch back under the slides and under the swings, and then every couple of years, we go in and refresh it. We do require that, you know, it's not just garden mulch you'd buy at Home Depot, Lowe's. It is certified as safety material. It goes through special screens as the manufacturer, and they actually have to test it. They have a way to test it to make sure that it meets all requirements as a safety surface, so. But I am recommending Athco for both of these playgrounds. For the grand total for both playgrounds is $89,951, and I do, will stand for questions if there are any.
Justin, the, and I cannot remember the name of the park, but the area immediately west of the Old Sears off of Adams. Yes. And of course, there's a land bank piece of property that's been combined with that. Are there some plans, discussions with the Avenue, West Avenue A neighborhood in terms of developing that a bit, or?
Yeah, there have been discussions. No plans yet. As part of the grant that, I believe, United Way is kind of the lead on that grant, they're going to engage a landscape architect to come in and do a conceptual drawing of what the park could look like, so. I'll participate in that effort, as well as I'll invite neighbors out. Hutch Rec will be a part of that as well, so. So hopefully, and I think those dates are scheduled for this summer. I'd have to double-check on that, but hopefully, by this fall, we'll have kind of a conceptual drawing of what, as park staff, we'd like to see, and also what the neighbors would like to see. And that will drive the development down the road.
You talk about downtown. Of course, George Pile is, and I guess I'd consider that downtown as well, so we'd go from zero to a couple in pretty short order.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if we end up putting a playground at Ashmead Park because of the location to George Pile, which I know you have, traffic's a problem. We have some major streets you have to cross, but also with the elementary school there, there is play equipment nearby. Just off the top of my head, I'm kind of envisioning more open green space for flag football and soccer, and then possibly a large pavilion as a gathering place for picnics and things, so.
Set up differently for, okay.
Yeah, but we'll see what the neighbors have in mind. If they really want a playground, we'll definitely look into that, so.
Justin, what was your time schedule on this project, these two projects?
It'll be, well, we're going to start with the concrete work across the street, hopefully this week. If this is approved today, there's about a three-week lead time on it, and then it'll take me a couple of weeks. I'll do probably one weekend and the next the other weekend or something like that, so we're looking sometime in July for both of these.
Pretty soon.
Well, that's great.
The style of equipment that you're looking at for George Pile, where else can one, that is different. Where else can one see that kind of equipment, do you know?
We really don't have anything along this line here in Hutchinson. This is a brand-new design that Landscape Structures, they're the manufacturer, has come up with in 2016. This playground was actually featured some of their national-wide shows they do. So this is a prepackaged, not a custom-built. That's why there's so much there for such a reasonable price. I can't go in and modify this one. On the other playground, I can. I can say, I don't like this slide. Can we move it over here? On this one, this is what it is. And they've put a lot of time and effort into this design, so.
Look forward to seeing that.
Great work on these projects, Justin. This is, I love that Athco uses community labor, too. That's neat.
Yeah, yeah, and it's not just Athco. It's really every manufacturer, every distributor out there. It's something that I've always liked to do with playgrounds. Because you get, you get community involvement, you get ownership by the community. I also take advantage of it with my staff, so I have my staff out there building it, so when we need to replace a part or piece, we're familiar with how it's put together, so. And it saves quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
All right, other questions, comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve a contract with Athco LLC to supply playground equipment and supervise community build in George Pile Park and Garden Grove for an amount not to exceed $89,951.
Second. Motion second. Please call roll.
Pyrostic Carvalho?
Yes.
Boldner?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8C, consider proposal for design services for the River Otter exhibit.
Good morning. Justin Combs again. I do want to point out in my memo, I got the initials for the company wrong. The correct initials are GLMV. I have it written two different ways, but it should be corrected to GLMV. So in 2014, or prior to 2014, we had three river otters at the Hutchinson Zoo. And the two males and one female. In 2014, we took those off-exhibit for a couple of reasons. First, the exhibit did not meet current standards as far as the room that river otters need. But more importantly, it really didn't contain them. They got out quite often. We had to catch them, so. So we took them off-exhibit. The, one of the otters ended up dying of old age, and then the other two, we sent to other zoos. So we haven't had river otter since early 2014. We, even prior to 2014, there were efforts to build a new river otter exhibit. In 2010, 2011, zoo staff and Friends of the Zoo engaged WDM, an architect firm out of Wichita, to do some conceptual drawings and renderings of what a new river otter exhibit could look like. At that time, we realized it was going to be a relatively expensive project. We entered into an agreement with the Friends of the Zoo that we were going to split that cost 50/50. The budget we came up with was $375,000, or approximately $187,500 from each entity. So over the last several years, five or six years, the Friends have been doing fundraising to get their portion. They're not quite to their portion yet, but they will be very soon. Actually, maybe over the weekend, they met their goal. I'm not sure. It'll be close. But anyways, they're close enough that we need to start looking at design and get the project moving, so. Last September, we did, the zoo director and I and some members of the Friends of the Zoo did interview two companies for conceptual design of the river otter, kind of an updated conceptual design. We weren't real satisfied with the original one that was done six years ago. And we chose GLMV for that conceptual design. Just for what it's worth, the lead architect who was at WDM when we had the original conceptual design done, he did change positions and is now with GLMV. So it's a different company, same person, I guess, so. So anyway, in September 2015, Friends of the Zoo entered into a contract with them for conceptual design. They sat down with zoo staff, some other key stakeholders, and they came up with a conceptual design for that. And we're getting to the point now that to move the project forward, we really need to move forward with true construction documents or design services. So this agreement is for design services. If you'll notice, in the, in the contract, it does call out that the River Otter exhibit's going to cost $700,000. That was a big shock to me and to everyone at the table when the architect said that. There were a couple items we removed from that. There's a large boardwalk area that's not vital that we're going to go ahead and have designed, but we're not going to install at this point, as well as a large kind of covered gazebo area that, again, is not really essential to the River Otter exhibit. It's more of kind of a visitor amenity that will have design, but will come back hopefully in the future and build those couple elements. The initial design for this service, the proposal, was for $79,500, and that was more money than I was prepared to spend on design considering what our actual budget was. From the architect's standpoint, they were looking at what they thought it was going to cost to build versus what our budget was, so we had a discrepancy there. And we negotiated out the construction services. Construction services are everything kind of after the design is done, when we start constructing and we have a question on, you know, electrical issue or something like that. Those are construction services. Those are generally billed hourly. I felt comfortable removing those from this contract for a couple of reasons. One, all the engineers that are part of this, the structural, the electrical, and the plumbing and mechanical are all local, so if I have a question on electrical, as opposed to going back to the architect who's going to go back to the electrical engineer, I'll cut the architect out and I'll go right to the electrical engineer who's here in town. Same way with structural. So we did eliminate the construction services from the contract. We also then, through negotiations, brought just the base fee for design down. And a lot of that was done because we are going to be acting as a general contractor on this. That's really our other way of getting this cost down to what we have budgeted, is we will do as much of the work as we can with in-house labor. And so through talking with the architects, I told them that we don't need as much detail on the drawings and on the spec sheets as what a general contractor would need because we're not bidding products out, you know, we'll use in-house labor, those sorts of things, so. So between the construction services and kind of the less detailed drawings through us acting as the general contractor, we got the cost down to $56,000, which is more in line with a project of this size. You know, I always try to spend 12%-ish on design. I think this is slightly over that, but it's in line for design services, so.
Justin, where does this fit into, and I'm beyond the design piece here, but the construction of the exhibit itself? Is that within our current CIP?
Yes. Yeah, it's in 2016.
Is it in '16?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have not bonded that yet, but it is in there for $187,500 for our portion of it.
$187,500.
Yeah, the balance is coming from Friends of the Zoo.
But is that the, is that going to be sufficient for the new design?
I hope so. I really do think it will be with cutting out the boardwalk and the gazebo, and then how, I mean, we're going to save a lot of money by doing this in-house. It's going to take a lot longer to build. You know, if we hire a contractor, they would knock it out in, you know, four or five months. It's probably going to take us a year. You know, we've got limited number of staff. We also have every other building in the city that we maintain, so we may have to. so we may have to pull off our plumber to go fix something at, at City Hall or something, so. Uh, Friends of the Zoo are aware of that, and it's gonna take a lot longer to construct, um, but we'll definitely see a significant cost savings. Um, as well as, i- when we build things in-house, we have that knowledge of how it was built, so if we do have maintenance issues down the road, we're more prepared to handle those, so. Um, I have warned the Friends of the Zoo, we may get to the point where, where we're gonna ask them to do fundraising for a very specific thing, so. Um, you know, if we, the glass panels are very, very expensive, so we may be, ma- we may be only able to afford two panels, but I may, may ask the Friends, you know, these panels cost, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars a piece, uh, just making that number up, so. Uh, and we may ask them, say, you know, "If you really want that third panel, you know, can you help us fundraise for it?", um, those sorts of things. So, it's gonna be an ongoing, ongoing process for, I think, some individual things, some individual upgrades, as well as, uh, in the design later, you'll see there's a, a large windmill. I've, I've contacted a local business owner, um, and they're excited to help find the windmill, and then they've got the equipment to actually bring it and set it up and deliver it and install it for us, so. So, we'll also be looking for community partners as, as we go along with this, but, um, I, I have, uh, was very nervous of this project, um, and to be honest, I still am of the cost, but I think the more we dive into it and the more we, we design it in a way we c- that we can build it in-house, um, that we'll, we'll meet that budget, so.
Will the, the design process help you kinda answer whether or not you can, um, come in at, at budget?
Yeah, yep, yeah, through the design process, we'll identify which scopes of work we can do in-house and which we can't. Um, the ones that we do in-house, really all we're looking at is material cost, so those are easy to go out and get, get prices for. Um, and then the scopes we can't do, um, y- you know, the pool system, it's, it's really like a backyard pool, the filtration system is. Uh, so that may be something we look at, uh, a vendor to install that for us, so. As we get more design documents, we can start engaging, um, contractors for those scopes and get a better cost estimate before we... I mean, the last thing I wanna do is do a groundbreaking and then get halfway done and say, "Eh, we're out of money", you know, so. So, I will put us in that position, so.
Well, I remember when the Friends of the Zoo came to us a few years ago with this astronomical figure for the otters that was more than all of our homes.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, we challenged them to come back with fifty percent, and, and it's impressive what they've been able to do, a relatively small group of people.
Yeah, you know, our budget's three-seventy, or, yeah, three-seventy-five for this. The, the contra- or the, uh, the architect said if we, that we were to bid out just the exhibit, so just the portion we're gonna bid, not the boardwalk, not the, um, not the shade structure, he would estimate that around between four-fifty and five-hundred thousand dollars, so. That's kinda where we're at, and then you have to consider our labor savings with us doing it in-house, so. Those numbers are manageable to me, but I'm still not, not ready to break ground on this, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions?
Oh, I do have some, some pictures, sorry, I talk too long.
Oh, now you're tugging at our hearts, Justin.
Hold on, there's more.
They were the best part of the zoo, they were.
So, this is in the, what's currently the beaver exhibit now, um, in the aviary building. This is how the exhibit looks now with the, with the beaver in it, so. Uh, this is, this is the current conceptual design.
Was one of those pictures really?
Um, I, I don't know which one is which.
Rest in peace.
That was before me, so. So, this is the large deck area that I said we would not be building, um, as, as far as this. And then this area here, actually, it starts all the way back here. This is all covered patio area, covered, um, shade structure that we, we will not be doing as well. So, we'll just have the concrete that's underneath it, um, and then this is the actual exhibit. Um, there'll be a windmill sitting here, which is kinda the source of the water, and then a waterfall down through here. One will be built as a slide, so there will be no, no rocks in it. Um, the other one will be more of a natural waterfall feature, and then a pool here, um, with glass enclosure, so you can see them in the water and above the water. One thing we found out is river otters actually really like to spend most of their time at the edge of the water, not in the water. Uh, and so we've designed this in a way that we have a lot of linear feet of water edge, um, to, to keep them active. And if you've seen active river otters, they're just, they're amazing, they're very entertaining animals, so. Uh, it's a great, great design, um, and I really have to credit the zoo staff on this design, and we sat down with GMLV. Our zookeepers were the ones that really drove this, they said, "This is what we wanna see, this is what the river otters do", so, um, it was very impressed with all the zoo staff, um, on this, so. So, that's one, one view, here's more of, of a view you would get, um, as you're looking at the exhibit. So, these are the glass, uh, panels, you can see the otters in the water. Uh, this is the shade structure I was talking about that we will not build as, as part of this phase. Um, and the seat wall will be determined on whether we, something we can do or not. That may be one of those specialty things that we ask for, for specific fundraising for this seat wall. Uh, and then the boardwalk's kinda out here, out beyond the picture, so. And then, uh, I guess we didn't talk about location of it. So, this is obviously the zoo, uh, this is the aviary buil- building here where the river otters were, where the, um, beaver is now, this is the dino dig area, so it'll be directly adjacent to the dino dig in, in this area here, so. But it is my recommendation to move forward with, uh, GLMV, uh, for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, so.
Not to see fifty-six thou-
Fifty-six, I'm sorry.
Fifty-six.
Trying to still, still negotiate.
Good for you, good, good negotiating skills.
Yeah.
All right, any further questions of council? Anyone from the audience that would like to comment?
I assume we will have no trouble getting otters back.
Correct, yeah, we've already put feelers out there to other zoos, um, and, and I don't anticipate we'll have any problem. Actually, we had them, we had some lined up, but they were gonna be here too early for us, so.
Okay.
We're already preparing, uh, a holding spot for them, 'cause we'll get them well before the exhibit's finished. Um, so they're, they're, um, used to the area and those sorts of things, so. So, we don't have a nice exhibit with no animals in it, so.
All right, we, we would entertain a motion.
I move we approve, uh, staff proposal to, um, engage GLMV architecture for design, uh, of the river otter exhibit not to exceed fifty-six thousand dollars.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, please call roll.
Pyros De Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes, next item please.
Item nine, Report of City Officials.
All right, Nancy, welcome back.
Thank you, I wasn't actually gone, thank you.
Steve? How about you?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Yes, just an item or two, thank you, Mayor. I had been speaking with John, and I don't know if you were able to pull up that plat or not, about a property on Thirty-Sixth Street. There's a zoning issue, um, the property owner is wanting to build a structure, um, a shop on a parcel that he owns. He owns several lots, let's see if there... So, well, yeah, this doesn't have the number, the, the plat, but his house is on...
This house would be the-
Thirty-sixth.
Right.
And he wants to build-
I hate it when we do this. Here, I've got a little pointer.
That'll work great.
This is his house right here.
And he's in a position where he can't do a lot with all of that property in the back, because, as I understand, is it Thirty-Fifth that isn't developed, or Thirty-S sixth?
He's on, he's on Thirty-Fifth, which is right here, and Thirty-sixth is not developed. That's this, this, you can see the street where it's going to go, but it's not developed.
Now, when I went out and visited him, he has, um, there is a fire hydrant right near Thirty-S sixth that he has to have an eas- he needs to maintain an easement for. Um, and I think he wants to build an access road to Thirty-S sixth to a structure that would be like a shop. But he's, um, from what I understand, he, he doesn't, he's not able to build anything on those two lots because Thirty-S sixth isn't developed. And I, I guess I'm just asking, what are his options with all that property? 'Cause I, I want him to be able to use the property that he owns.
Sure, maybe I can explain what he's wanting to do. Uh, this gentleman named Steve Stowers owns this house here, and he also has purchased two lots that are, would front on to Thirty-S sixth if it were built, but it's not. Um, and so he owns three lots. There were also other lots, it's kinda hard to see on this diagram, but there's several other lots that are platted and are under different ownership on this side of that Thirty-S sixth that is not in, as well as lots on the north side. So, what, he came to city staff and said, "I want to build an access road", or, "I wanna access..." He wants to build a garage back here and access it on, through the city right-of-way. And he wants to face on to the right-of-way. Well, our regulations don't allow you to, to build a garage that faces, uh, uh, so we would consider this a three-lot. You can't build a garage that faces that back road. It's against our regulations. I know the road's not in there, but someday, it probably will be. I mean, I think the people who own these other lots are banking on the fact that there's going to be a road there someday. I told him, I've talked with him a couple of times, I told him, "Well, you, you could build back here and access from this existing road and face your, have your garage door face this way." Uh, I'm not sure exactly why he doesn't want to do that, but I did wanna make you all aware that we are, uh, the Plan Commission tonight is considering an amendment to our regulations that would allow for, um, right now, if you, if you were to build it right now, you'd have to pave all the way from this road back.
That, I think, is the biggest concern, 'cause of the cost of concrete.
So, they're proposing, uh, an amendment that will come before you guys July fifth, no, July, July twenty-first, or whatever our next meeting is, that would, um, only require you to pave to the rear of the primary structure, and then you could gravel all the way to the detached garage.
Yeah.
This is a common, common, uh, item we have come before us. We've talked about it at the staff level and the Plan Commission, and they're both favorable to that. Um, now, I don't know what the public thinks, but, um, anyway, I think that would help Mr. Stowers out, but staff would not, well, I don't think it would, we wouldn't support at all. It would be a violation of our regulations to allow him to have his garage face up onto this road that's not there, and then he'd have to access it via, uh, I don't know, gravel or dirt, or, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't be appropriate. Um, and it would be a violation of the regulations. Plus, at, at some point, these lots will develop, and then they would be budding up to a garage that's facing out.
Yeah, it's not appropriate at all, right, yeah.
Now, one other question from my notes, and I may have written this down wrong, that he wants it to run lengthwise, so it wouldn't actually face, um, Thirty-S sixth.
He wants it to run, I don't underst-
Or, he wants it to run, it's a shop that he wants to run like ninety feet long, north to south? And then, would that be allowable?
He can face, well, he can't face it towards the north, but he could face it east or west. The other requirement is he, you can't build a shop bigger than your primary structure, so, um, and we're proposing him in that a little bit as well, uh, whi- which would allow, um, him to go up to twelve-hundred square feet. I don't know how large he was proposing, uh, to build, do you know what kind of-
You know, he's, he said that it's not even in his, his immediate plans, he just wants to know what his options are, and I think he's willing to find some sort of compromise, but if, if he can't build anything there, he, you know, he probably will sell at some point.
He can, he can build, he just couldn't do what he wanted to do.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, he, he could build today and face his, his shop toward the front and then put an asphalt roadway, or asphalt drive, or asphalt milling Swiss Slurry Seal, we allow.
Okay.
So, we do have options, but I think with these proposed amendments, he might have a few more options.
And that's being voted on this evening?
Yeah, Plan Commission will consider them tonight, and then they should come before you, July twenty-first. We have a lot of people, a, a lot of the lots in town, uh, houses were developed with maybe a single-car garage, or some of them with no garage at all, and this, there's a common, uh, I probably, second-most common question we have at the counter is, "Can I build a detached garage?" And, yes, they can, but our regulations right now don't, uh, make it very easy.
Yeah.
To do that, so.
Well, I appreciate all your clarification on that, it was, it was kind of confusing when I went out there because the way the lots sit and the lack of development on that side, but I appreciate it.
You can't see that there's a road there, we have had this issue as well on Roberts Road, you guys are probably familiar with that.
Yeah.
Um, where, you know, it's platted, but it's not there, and so people think, "Well, you, you know, it's never gonna be there, or, why can't I do this?", but really, you can see that, you know, vacating this road here, which is one thing he asked me if we could do, wouldn't make sense, because it connects on. Then he turned this into a cul-de-sac, and besides which, um, I don't even know if it would be feasible from the perspective of utilities and fire access. So, I, I think this solution that we came up with, as far as, um, if, if it's approved by you all with the gravel driveway, would probably help him out a lot.
Okay, yeah, I'll follow up with him, he was very respectful and, um, reasonable in his, his request, so, thank you. And, um, you know, that's really all I have, thank you.
That's all you have, Jay? All right, very good. Uh, I don't have anything this morning, uh, John?
Yeah.
Your items, please?
Yeah, Mayor Council got a couple of things I'd like to talk to you about today. First is the, uh, kind of an update on the, uh, ATV access South Hutchinson issue that you're, uh, very well aware of, and, I think I reported to you previously that, uh, a few weeks back, we were contacted, uh, by the Kansas Wildlife and Parks officials, actually met with Justin and, and Paul on some other issues, but this was part of the discussion. And basically, there was a question on their part concerning our authority to, um, lease the area within the high-water marks. And, uh, you know, their interpretation of federal laws regarding the navigable, uh, water areas, and I think in conversations with our city attorney, there's some, some agreement with that. And so, you know, we're really, I think, at a point where I think we've exhausted a lot of effort to try to make that work, and I think when we even went into the, the lease discussion, there was a lot of questions about our authority, a lot of questions about, "Do we own that?", and, and I think we even had something in the lease that kinda gave us an out if that were to come about. So, that being the case, um, I, I, I mean, I personally think we're left with two decisions. And one of those is to comply with the City of South Hutchinson request is to close that access. Um, the other issue, the other option is for us to take no action and not close our access. Therefore, uh, City of South Hutch would be forced to decide how they wanted to, uh, to handle that, whether they close it or not, and, uh, so. And I did receive a, an email from the, uh, city administrator who, uh, from their meeting last night, I think, got forward that. Some of you may not have seen it, 'cause I just sent it out this morning, and wanted to make sure we were, uh, the City of Hutchinson understood the City of South Hutchinson's position, which apparently hasn't changed, is that they, uh, still want to reiterate their request to, uh, for us to close that access, so, um. Again, I think we've, uh, worked hard on this and trying to, to make something happen there. Uh, City of South Hutch, you know, obviously has been, uh, you know, wanting to see this happen for some time, and we're willing to look at the lease arrangement, and, uh, uh, other things have happened. Um, others getting involved and questioning our authority, and I think there's probably some validity to that, so. With that, um, I think we're ready to take some direction from the council and, uh, see where, you know, show where you wanna go.
Well, based on that communication from South Hutch, it appears that if we don't give direction to close it, they're going to close it.
The, the, yeah, to, to how they would do that, I don't know, but there's, there would be a way.
Well, there's not a perfect solution to any of this. Uh, I think over the s- past many, many, many months, uh, every potential or conceivable option has been explored and discussed openly by both bodies, both governing bodies, trying to resolve this, uh, to keep it open. But obviously, the, uh, the State Agency has intervened and have essentially interpreted that we don't have the authority to do this, so. We're at that point where we need to consider one of, of these decisions. I would suggest that, uh, if it's within our authority, that, that we would, um, comply with the South Hutchinson request reluctantly, and I would under- underscore reluctantly. It's not desired, I think, most of us on the council have preferred to keep the, uh, to, to keep the access open, but that does not seem to be a viable option.
So, if the access is open, it's either full public access or no access? There can't be any, any limitation to the access to- There can't be any, any limitation to the access to, to that space?
Correct, yeah.
Is what, is what the state or whatever the, the federal authority has said, yeah.
Yeah, they're saying we can't lease it.
Cuz they're, you know, they're, they're actively working, I think that's what they were meeting with Justin about, is to create more access points throughout the river, throughout the state, and working with landowners. Cuz essentially, that's what you've gotta do, is you've gotta cross most, in most cases, private property to get access to the river. And, uh, that's not to say that, uh, there will not be ATV access or, or activity down there once we close it, because people find ways to access the river, and I'm certain that that will probably happen. It just won't be as easy. And I think in the history of this, it hasn't always been the activity inside the riverbanks or the high-water mark or whatever. It's been the activity getting to their streets, driving down streets and damaging property. And I think that's really what brought some of this to a head.
Well, it's disappointing.
Well, and I give a lot of credit, you know, we talked, Mayor talked about Jason McKay and his efforts. And he's been very good to work with and very energetic and very, um, I mean, just really, uh, worked hard on this. And I feel bad in that I'm not sure we've got a whole lot of options for him, so, and is he still here?
Yeah, Jason's still there. Jason, you need to find a pasture and buy it. I mean, seriously, it's too bad. I really hate this.
Well, it's up, John, I'd have to, one of the questions that a lot of our members are asking, that's one of the.
Jason, you wanna come on up here?
Yeah.
Why I was up so late last night is, not all our members work first shift. And I have to answer and field questions first, second, and third shift. And so lately, since this email's come out to us in light of the, we was at the finish line, see the checkered flag and it red-flagged our race on us, you know, so to speak. Uh, I'm forced to answer a, a lot of questions. And some of the questions that I'm getting is, is, well, has the City of Hutchinson entered into, to, uh, lease agreements for city-owned access to the state-owned riverbed property with any other agencies? The, um, the, uh, another question is, uh, and a lot of these are for, for Mr. Brown, unfortunately, uh, is, uh, if they was to close that access point that's in, that's on the table right now for closure, doesn't that eliminate just, and everybody with the canoe? I mean, we don't just ride four-wheelers here. We need, we need a place to launch our canoes, we need a place to walk over and picnic, we need access to the, to the river to sunbathe, to relieve stress, there's several reasons that members have joined. And, and there's, we don't, I haven't had time in this endeavor to see, I've only been concentrating from these two bridges, from the Frank Hart Crossing to the Fifty Bridge, the South Hutchinson, the Hutchinson in the state. And I haven't looked at, had an opportunity to look at past the Frank Hart Crossing, what you guys own and what some of the property owners own that may, that may alleviate this, that we may be able to get that piece of land that you're talking about. You guys may own it, I don't know yet. And, and with that said, I hate to see something that all these people have been doing since nineteen-seventy just stopped on them when there, there, there may be another alternative. And, and what I had asked South Hutchinson last night was essentially this, which I understood that they're, I went there to, to, to get their feelings, was essentially this, we as the Riverats feel like we could continue to, uh, if approved, uh, uh, accepted, uh, to do everything that we said that we was gonna do without the lease agreement. We'll go over there and build a parking lot, we'll provide security, we'll provide the staffing, we'll provide the solutions and remedies to the problems. And we kinda felt like, when we said that in the beginning, and they're like, well, volunteering staffing and self-policing don't work, yeah? Because at that time, we was just an angry group of citizens that they told that they was gonna close the place. Well, in the months since then, countless citizens have come forth that are civic-minded, that want to, to put forth the effort to solve this problem. Well, the members that have joined, I can sell a few motorcycles and give those people their membership money happily back in. But what about those people that put in the sweat equity? How do I pay those people back? Now, where are those people gonna go? You know, where's that guy that absolutely takes parking tickets because he has a half of a foot and all he can do is shuffle to his quad and undo it? And that's what he does, and he does that every day down there. Those people kinda need an, an additional place, and I would like the city to look to see if they own any property that they'd be willing to lease to a nonprofit organization. Cuz need I remind you, we still provide the insurance, we can still release others of liability and carry the liability within ourselves, that we are not a group of just volunteers now. I feel, I felt like when I asked South Hutch last night, can we continue to just do the same thing without the lease agreement? That they, that I had a chance for them to say yes, because now we've stabilized ourselves. Now we've put together policies and procedures and practices that we can utilize to alleviate that situation and, and, and continue to do that. Because as he alluded to, if you just close that, the problem's gonna revert back to the way that it was without my effort, without me going down there and, 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 and trying to solve the problem. And the problem's gonna probably continue. I mean, I think we all kinda understand that, and so I really don't wanna give up. If you tell me I gotta go home and give up, I will. I will, I know when to concede. I just don't have that gene to concede when I know that there might be an alternative to lead by perfect example. And unfortunately, some of the other councils and some of the other people can't lead by example. Well, let's show them. Let's show them that we can find something else to provide something for some people who choose not to bowl or play golf or enjoy these wonderful parks that I just seen, that I take my kids to. I mean, we all do those things too, but at the same time, there's citizens that need your help for this outlet. And I implore you and beg you to, to try to alleviate, uh, the, the, what's gonna happen when you close that. I'd like to think that we could still go over there. Mr. Manche, I believe, still willing to volunteer to let us lease that place, to carry some insurance, to release liability for everybody, to encourage members, people to, to be a member to go down there and do that. We could further restrict the, the proposal, give us a chance to introduce an additional proposal to, you know, to, I don't, I think last night, South Hutch just wasn't willing to listen. And I think if we was given the opportunity to, to introduce an additional proposal that would consist of such things as, South Hutch, as you guys do meet every two weeks. And, and if we was to allow to do what we had said we was gonna do in the first place without a contract and, and, and put forth the tenacity that I have and my members have to achieve it, every two weeks, we can come to you and say, hey, is, is this working? Are we doing something wrong here? Are we missing something? Has something happened and we did not address it right? And/or, you know what, you tried, too bad. But we was unanimously voted on both sides for a chance, and we never even got the chance to have that chance.
Well, Jason, I might just say that I think, I mean, even if, if we close it at their request, if they in the future are receptive to allowing you to try some other method of, then, then all you have to do is come back to us, and I think we're still gonna be receptive to opening it back up. But we don't have the authority to do what you're asking. I mean, you've already convinced us, you know? I think the convincing needs to happen on the South Hutchinson side.
But at the same time, and, and I might be wrong, and Mr. Brown might correct me, that the reason that we can't, the state can allow and does in several locations and places across the state, in two nonprofit organizations like Cora and some places in Topeka and some places in El Dorado, they allow them to do it at Canoplis on state-owned property. I'm talking about motorized vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
Right there, where you're at the beach, has anybody ever been to the beach there at the Canoplis at the, at the, uh, bank or the, the dam entrance? There's an ATV park there, it's relatively small, and that's what we're asking for. There's, I think that the city owns some access to some of the river that the state owns that we would have to ask the state, I understand that, if we could do that. But I would like to not just like nail in the coffin today.
But I think it, and I don't, I don't think that that is, is the direction we're, we're giving necessarily. I, I think we're, we're giving direction to respect the wishes of South Hutchinson. Because even if we forced the issue, do you really want?
No.
The other community to be against what you're doing? You know, I mean, we need to find a way to.
I'm not, I'm not asking to force the issue with that location. I'm asking that, that, uh, that the city be willing to, to allow us to, to, to find an alternative access to the river. You know, like the art, for somewhere between here, what we do and what the Art Trade Club does, cuz I think that's kinda the city's parameters somewhere in there. Like I said, I haven't had time to investigate each individual property owner on that. I've only done it from bridge to bridge, and now I need to do it from there. I'm just, is the city willing to even entertain that kind of endeavor by me? Because the last time I was told so, when I got to the finish line and got told no, after being told unanimously yes, those unanimous yeses was hard to get.
And Jason, the disappointing part of that is the, when the state agency intervened on this, and.
I asked them first, by the way.
And, and that, and that really has been, uh, the impediment for the two cities to, uh, resolve and work some lease agreement out with you, cuz I think we have all been receptive, uh, in principle to some type of a access point and a lease agreement until the state agency. And Paul, have, have, have those discussions essentially concluded from the state agency?
They are concluded with respect to the new TV park. They're basically telling us, look, you don't have the jurisdiction. You can't lease ground within the navigable stream, and we cannot. It's federally protected, it's operated and, and operates as a public trust by the state. We simply don't have that authority.
Yeah.
I understand that.
So that, that puts the roadblock for all of us.
What I do understand, it was, and like I said, I might be wrong, but my interpretation of the email that I got, which is only an interpretation from a biologist, is, which is, and she's probably correct, which, in, in no disrespect towards her interpretation, it, it, it seems to me that if I was to find such a location, that might be a feasible request to the state, would the city entertain? Cuz you'd have to request it, not me, cuz you'd own the, the adjacent property.
I, I think at this point, we are dealing with simply the access, um, area, access point that we've, we've allowed for a number of years. And I, I, I think as a council, we're, we're open to allowing access if we can find another place. But, but at, at this point in time, and out of respect for, for our neighbor, uh, South Hutch, my leaning is at this point, we probably ought to close that access. And at least speaking for myself, I'm certainly open to hearing some alternatives down the road if they can be found. But then we'd be looking at, at those as alternatives and what maybe can be worked out. But, uh, it's unfortunate, uh, I was hopeful, and it did look like we were very close, but that's not where it is at right now.
That's fine, and I, and I understand that, sir. So I'm to understand that with that access closed there, that's the access that would be closed. So any other lawful access is fine?
Far, I mean, that's, that's a question for our attorney, but as far as I'm concerned, if it's lawful access, it's lawful access.
It depends on where you're accessing, it has to be public access, and it depends on what you're accessing with. We have places where we have public access to the river from city property, but you cannot take a motorized vehicle because you cannot take it over the levee.
Yeah.
Can't take it over the levee.
So you gotta be somewhere other than here.
And that's where we are with our, our access point, it's over the levee.
Yeah.
For example, in Cary Park, it's adjacent to the river. People can take their kayak or canoe, stick it on their shoulder, go over the levee and, and go to the river.
That's, the question I'm getting is, is how is that interpreted? Is, is who, what statute or, or code is that? Is that just this? I mean, I'm, I have like, probably twelve-hundred people fixing to hit me up with the emails and the texts and the messages of, you know, I have to.
Well, yeah, and I, I, it's really not an issue of, of access. It's an issue of us not being able to lease this particular piece of property to a private entity.
Yeah, I understand that.
Cuz access points, I mean, like I said, the state's looking to, to negotiate more of those throughout the state of Kansas to encourage people to recreate on the river.
Even if you have the access, you have to allow it to be completely open, which South Hutch isn't amenable to. I mean, they want a lease agreement, which makes sense. I mean, that's something that they were willing to look at, I guess. But, um, that's not an option regardless of access, is what you're saying.
That, yeah, because we have the ability to leave that open. That was one of our options today, just to do nothing.
But they're gonna close it.
Yes.
Well, my, I favor at this point in time that, again, out of respect for South Hutch and the requests they've made and, and the efforts that, that have been made, that, that we, um, since it's our access point, that we go ahead and close it. I certainly remain open to looking at other things down the road, if, if there are some other things that could be looked at. But, uh, that, that's where I'm at.
I'm, I'm with you, Steve, so.
And I'm hoping that you will be successful down the road with coming up with something else, but time will tell.
That's why when you say you're with him, are you with him on both of it? Or just the closure or the future?
The future.
I don't want to all this work together.
I am open, I am open to looking at something down the road that is feasible and whatnot. Uh, but today with the, the access that we, we have or we allow.
I get it, I understand it.
Yeah.
And hopefully, Jason, you can openly communicate that to your twelve-hundred members.
No more than you can.
I know, that, that this body is, uh, is receptive to looking to the future. We do not wanna be, uh, sought as, as the obstacle to this because our desire would be, and it always has been, is to keep it open. But there are state, state agencies that are prohibiting us from doing that.
I know that, I understand that. And, and I haven't really had anybody that has expressed the, any kind of ill-will or, or ill-pleasure from the Hutchinson City Council side of it.
Yeah.
To be quite frank with you, it's all, there ain't anything I can do about people's opinions. But, uh, I do would, hope that I have your luck. It's real reminiscent of the way you deal with people that just don't like certain decisions that you make or whatever, and you don't kill the messenger theory, so hope they've listened to that. So, well, thanks for working with me, guys.
All right, Jason. All right, hope to see you back here.
Yeah, I'll find another bachelor.
Thanks, Jason.
Is that enough of a directive, or do we need a formal motion on that, or just a directive?
I think I can just take that directive as a manager and make that happen.
Okay.
Okay, John? Uh, the, 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 last thing I wanted to update you on, uh, Justin and I are gonna do this together. I'm gonna kick it off, and he'll correct all the things that I'm wrong on and probably turn it over to him. But, uh, we wanted to give you just a quick update as to where we're, kinda where we stand budget-wise on the sports arena project, and really in preparation for bid package three that we'll be bringing to the council, uh, probably on June twenty-first. And, um, you know, bid package three, if you remember, consisted of the audiovisual part of the, uh, project, uh, which was sound and video boards, um, and, uh, food service and signage was the, the three areas there. And the bid package three came in at, um, about forty thousand dollars, or the budget was nine-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars, came in at nine-hundred-and-eighty-one, so about forty thousand dollars over. And obviously, there's some things we can work on as we move forward on that. But, um, a couple of major items that we kinda wanna talk about today is, in that package included only one video board. And originally, we wanted two, obviously, and, uh, so the, there was an alternate, it was another hundred thousand dollars for the additional, uh, uh, video board. And then the other alternate that was a big one that's come back to us is the, uh, concessions on both the east and west end. And those totaled about four-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars. And I need to give you a little history on that. This project was approved and designed with, uh, elimination of the east and west concession stands as they stand today. We had two new concession stands in the south. We had a new concession stand in the, uh, uh, second floor above on the south side, and then a renovated concession stand on the north side. So four, four total concession stands. And that's, bids were put out, the, the design was done that way. And, um, so after that was all done, I don't know whether it's miscommunication or just, uh, somebody wasn't paying attention, the college, ACC, had some concerns about, um, elimination of the east and west concessions. And so we convened a, a special meeting, if you will, and Mayor Dave Line was there at the arena, and we walked through and we listened to some of the, the thought processes, to why it's important to, to keep those. And so the committee generally gave a direction to, uh, put the east and west back in, uh, take one of the south concessions out, um, just leave it as a place to sell T-shirts and that kinda stuff. And so that's where we got into this, it's an alternate. It's an alternate, and those bids came back at 400 and some thousand dollars to do that. Um, so last week at the building committee meeting, we had a long conversation about that and, uh, kind of where we're at in relation to, um, our contingencies. And, uh, you know, the bottom line is, just to give you a brief overview on bid, bid package three, our owner's contingency now is about $570,000. And so if we take the concession stands out of that at $400,000, and then we take the video board down, and there's still a, a big question on the flooring and tile, uh, just really a big out, a question about where we're at there. They're not sure they're going to be able to get the value they thought they were in there. And so potentially adding that all up, we could be $40,000
In the hole.
In the hole. And, uh, there was a lot of talk then about the owners, the, you know, there's the owner's contingency and there's construction contingency. And the construction contingency, there was conversations about, well, we don't want to leave a lot of money on the table and not do things that we need to ha- have happen today. And so, uh, when you add the two together, it, you know, is 1.5 million dollars. And so the owners, the construction contingency, which is another pot, as you're aware, was about $750,000, which represents 3% of the project. And so there were a lot, well, we can, you know, that's a lot. We haven't used much of that. And, you know, J E Dunn, Ju- Ju- Justin and I had a conversation with him yesterday. Um, and I asked the question, so how much money have we spent on the project and where are we today? Thinking that we're well into this. Well, we've essentially, um, got about $22.3 million worth of work to start. So we're, you know, roughly 14% of the project is paid for, approved, those kinds of things. And so the theory is, it's way, way too early to start spending down the, the construction contingency.
Contingency, right.
And J E Dunn and I, you know, they built more of these projects than I have, and many of us. And, uh, you know, they're very reluctant to advise us to, okay, let's start spending down some of that when we've just barely got. And, and I think when people drive by the arena, you think, wow, they got all the walls up and, you know, things are, but there's so much more to go. And Justin can help with this as we go. So, uh, that's the dilemma. And so ultimately, the building committee, and John wasn't there last week, he was out of town for, uh, personal business, but agreed to leave east concession stand in, which was a $209,000 addition. So, uh, and again, not looking for any approval today or anything like that, but we just kind of wanted to update you as we prepare for bringing bid package three to you. And I would also say that in the alternates, there's always that one out there that we've talked about is the pavement of the parking lot. And I think we did finally get a bid on that, and it's, instead of the 400 number, it was 360 some thousand dollars. And that's something that we can decide at the very end of the project, because it would be the last thing that's done. And so I think our concern as the owner, also from J E Dunn, is that we don't get too carried away with these contingencies, that they're, they're there for a reason. Justin, you want to-
Yeah, just to clarify the two contingencies, the, the owner contingency and the construction contingency. The owner contingency is for scope changes caused by the owner. So, um, you know, if we say we want a more expensive tile, that comes out of the owner's contingency. Uh, the other thing that comes out of owner contingency is unforeseen conditions. Um, as an example, we're running into unsuitable soils for some of the footings, so we're having to over excavate for those footings and pour additional concrete. Um, so those are the types of things that come out of the owner's contingency. Uh, the construction contingency are for, for items that are overbid, um, based on, on kind of construction, um, related things. So it doesn't explain it very well. Things that were not initiated by the owner or the architect. As an example, if there are mechanical drawings and electrical drawings, and there's something on the two that don't mesh, as J E Dunn, J E Dunn's responsibility was to look through the, look through plans and say everything's fine before they bid them. So if there's a discrepancy on who's supposed to do what, or this pipe won't fit here, whatever it is, that comes out of the construction contingency, not the owner's, because it really wasn't initiated by the owner. The other thing that will come out of construction contingency is any weather-related delays. Uh, so if we have to have crews work overtime Saturdays and Sundays to get caught up, that comes out of the construction contingency. Uh, we started this process with 3% in each pot, um, so it was $755,000 in each pot. To date, uh, I'll run, run through some numbers here. Uh, to date, we've got, through the, the value engineering, through the VE process, we've actually added a little bit on paper, let me get through all this, uh, to, to $829,000. So we've reduced cost on, on the owner's side, so we've actually added, added to our contingency. Uh, now, the bad news is, we've also had a lot of things that have come out, that already came out of the owner's contingency, the unsuitable soils. Uh, we had some structural things that were unseen that we had to fix. Uh, so that values a negative number of $250,000. So after the addition to the contingency and the deduction, that leaves us with a current contingency on the owner's side of $573,000. Uh, based on the, the 3% rule of contingency, that number should be closer to 650, 680, as opposed to what we still have to be.
Justin, are they not understanding? Does the build, is the building committee not understanding the fundamental purpose of the contingency? Because this is alarming. I mean, we're, we're not going to get to the end of this project and be supplementing it with, out of our CIP.
I, I can, I can't speak for the building committee. I did bring this up, my concern, um, you know, because we, so we've got 573 left, the goal's 680. Um, and, and if we take the one option for the, for the, um, concession stand, that brings our budget, our, our contingency to six, or 364, roughly. Uh, that does not include the second, uh, video board, which hopefully we'll find some alternative funding for that. But, but again, so we're just getting, getting further down the contingency than I'm comfortable. And as project manager, it's just concerning to me because I feel like I'm responsible for the, for the budget of this, of this process. So, um, I understand the desire for the, for the concession stand, I really do. I think it would be great if we could do it, but I think John and I are just to a point, we need some direction on, on how we can move forward on this, so.
I think the direction is, um, go out and find a sponsor if you want all these things. Don't bleed down the contingency so that we don't have enough money when we're three quarters of the way into the project. And that's an irresponsible use of taxpayer funds.
Well, we've yet, yet to, uh, open the BP three bids. And, and those are scheduled to be open-
We have those open.
All right. You have those open, but there's-
They're open, there's still, there's still some value engineering going.
Value engineering to that, right.
Like our AV and, you know, we had a budget of half a million dollars on AV and audiovisual, and it came in somewhat over. And so we're evaluating those, and that will be what we bring back to the council.
That's when you'll bring back, and when, when like would you bring that back to us?
Probably next meeting. June 21st.
At the next meeting?
Yeah.
All right.
And the reason John and I wanted to bring this up today is, we have to make some decisions relatively quickly on the mechanical, electrical and plumbing of these concession stands. Um, if we're going to add, add the concession stand, the contractor needs to know soon. I don't have an exact date for you. Um, so, because those trades are already in the building, they're already working, um, and, and they need to get, get the concession stands rolling, if that's the direction we move, so.
Well, I agree that we don't want to cut out things that were cut out in the last round, really important things like restrooms. But I'm just, just nervous about spending, about blowing the budget. I mean, it's, it's disappointing that $30 million doesn't go that far, and I'm not sure I believe that it doesn't go that far.
We have looked at some, some alternates, some options, you know, keeping the concession as is. It costs a little bit of money because we'd have to re-feed the electrical, the plumbing and the water onto the new system. Um, you know, there might be an option where it doesn't become a full-blown concession stand with hot dogs and hot food, where it's just, give it a facelift and it's just prepackaged, so it's just bottled cokes and, and chips and M&M's. So there are some options there as well that we're evaluating that maybe are less costly. But to stand here and say it's going to cost, you know, $100,000 for this option and $50 for this option, we don't have those numbers from J E Dunn yet, so.
Well, I know staff is looking for some direction, and, um, there's a statement that's commonly used, there's winners and losers, and I hope we don't have to get into this situation of winners and losers, um, on, on this situation. I think we, we know what we're talking about. But my, my sense is, is that I think staff is trying to bring a, a solution to this in, in, in some form, whether you're wanting to defer that until the next meeting to present where you are today in terms of your recommendations, uh, or you want to really receive some specific direction today in terms of the concession issue and other priorities that the council has previously communicated on, I'm basically talking the parking lot and, and its full upgrade versus other al- alternates.
Yeah. I just think we're looking for, for direction so we can challenge our architects and J E Dunn on what, getting some more solid cost numbers for some of these options is really is that-
Yeah, I think, you know, part of the issue, and I apologize, because this concession issue has been around since January.
Yep.
Um, and, and we've just now getting to it. We kind of knew it was there. Obviously, you know, our design team did exactly what we told them to. They designed it based on, and we approved everything, and then at the last minute, well, let's look at this. And so that really changed a lot of what they were doing. And, uh, um, you know, we had no idea what the cost was, you know, we, and, and we get that, and now all of a sudden, wow. I mean, it's a lot bigger number, I think, than anybody expected. But I, I think, you know, I, I hope, Justin, maybe I'm wrong, that we can squeeze another two weeks before we approve bid package three to know exactly-
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just need to-
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
Give staff some time to, um, figure these numbers and have some other discussions with some other, uh, parties.
Yeah. I think with the college and with the building committee, again, some of the, just that, because, you know, yeah.
To me, simplifying the concession to do what you were talking about, Justin, makes a lot more sense. I mean, it's not like we're going to have to walk two miles to get hot food. You know, I mean, it's just kind of around the corner in the building. So I think we have to be pragmatic and practical about the whole thing.
Nancy put it well.
We've got maps to show you the distance in terms of number of linear feet
Yeah.
that the committee was shared way back in January between this location, that location, and so on, so.
How far you had to walk, it's your hot dogs, your nachos, your ice cream, and your folks.
Well, I mean, you know, come on, let's be real.
Earn it.
Yeah. But, and, you know, the concession, we don't operate concessions, and I, I know they've got thoughts on that, but, uh, it, it's just, uh, really kind of put us in a bind right now, and, and we really got to figure it out fairly soon. So I hope we can not have to answer the final deal before the 21st.
Before the 21st. And we really do need to listen to J E Dunn in terms of their experience, in terms of these contingency funds, uh, at this juncture of the project, to not to substantially deplete those.
Yeah, I don't want to spend them down to nothing.
Very good. Well, we'll, uh, we'll continue to work and talk with, uh, concession folks about what might be an option to consider and get prices on that, too, so.
Just a, a comment. The mayor made the comment winners and losers, and, and hopefully we can avoid that. And yet, at the same time, if it comes to, to making sound decisions, uh, to, to design this, elements of this structure, then, then there may have to be.
There, there is going to be.
And, and I'm, I'm not opposed to, to being in the position of, of making those kind of decisions.
We recognize that.
Um, if, if, if that's what it comes to.
I think these two guys here have some great skill sets in terms of negotiations. And I, I would look forward to, I think, you guys bringing a, a solution back to us here on the 21st.
Hopefully we can do that. Yep.
No pressure.
All right, no pressure.
Yeah.
And mayor, that's all I have.
And how long on the executive session?
Uh, let's just go till noon and-
Well, a little before noon, so we don't-
We'd have to buy lunch.
We won't have to provide lunch again, so.
If I could have some-
Next item, please.